Hi and welcome to Weizen's AP German Test Prep Session. I'm Esther, I am an attorney, I'm also a German teacher. I moved to the US five years ago, but I am born and raised in Berlin. And I have been teaching German for the last couple of years. So I hope I can help you guys with all your questions and get you ready for the AP exam. I will be talking about the exam, I also will be talking about to-dos, not-todos, and then how to prepare. And then at the end, we're gonna do a little exercise that is taken from an AP exam to show you what to expect. I will do the first part in English to include everybody, but then at the end I will switch to German because that's what we're here for. You want to practise as much as possible, so I will switch to German then and then we can do that in German. Alright, so first off, and I'm sure you kind of know this already, but I just wanted to make sure that we're all in the same boat. The exam is separated in two sections. The first part is the multiple choice questions. You see, we have 30 questions for the interpretive communication part, that's print texts, and then 35 questions for the interpretive communication, print and audio text combined, and audio texts. And then, so that's 40 minutes and then 55 minutes. And then the second part is the free response questions part. We have four questions here, you can see that all here in the overview. So we have an email reply, we have an argumentative essay, we have a conversation and cultural comparison. Yeah, so that's how it's structured. The free response is exactly that, you have to do free writing and multiple choice is exactly that, so you have to do multiple choice questions. And both is 50%, okay? The length of the exam is three hours and three minutes, but well, three hours. As I've said, you have the multiple choice part, you have the free response questions part, and the topics are families in different societies, the influence of language and culture on identity, influences of beauty and art, how science and technology affect our lives, factors that impact the quality of life, and environmental, political and societal challenges. That's very broad and that's also what the exam is. So the text that you encounter could basically be anything. Yeah, this really is everything that affects life. And the test questions do vary accordingly. And the last point is, I'm sure you all know that already, but I want to make sure you really do know, the exam is not curved. So you will get the grade that you get, yeah? You already know that universities have different criteria, so depending on your grade, you know, can waive the class or not. But you will get the grade that you get, which is a little bit different than other exams. And if you have any questions, I put down the link where you find all the information. A couple of training questions, how it's graded, everything. Everything you want to know, you find there. Alright, and then when it comes to the to-dos, I came up with everything that I get asked about. So some of this might be redundant and you already know, but I'd rather give you too much than too little, yeah? Obviously, very much clear, I hope, is beyond time. The second one is read the instructions and the text carefully. This one is again also hopefully very clear and obvious. However, reading the text carefully, I can't over-stress. Specifically for German, it's important that you read every single word because an entire sentence can turn or shift completely with one word, yeah? So it's really important. I know the test is, you don't have much time and it's hard to read and to not be stressed out, but when it comes to German, I can't over-stress how important it is to read every single word carefully and take it into consideration. And then obviously follow the instructions. And again, specifically for German, so when they say argue, argue. When they say state a case, do that, do what they want. If you do something else because you think this would be better or this would give you extra points, it can go wrong. Yeah, you really want to follow the instructions and do what they ask you to do. Obviously, check your time. And the next one is know your strengths. And again, that does not just apply to a German exam, but it is important for this exam. So you want to know what you're good at and what you're not good at. For example, if independent clauses, if that is your thing, then obviously use them. If you know you get confused, for example, with a verb order, don't do it, yeah? Or cases, if you know that some cases are trickier than others, try to avoid them, yeah? Specifically, obviously in the free, in the free writing part, you can't do that in the multiple choice part. But in the second part, use what you are good at and don't use what you're not good at. German gives you so much variety, variety in sentences. Use that, use that to your advantage, yeah? That's also kind of the next point, know your game plan and know what works for you. So figure out, if you want to read the questions first or read the text first, try to find a plan that works for you every single time. When it comes to multiple choice questions, it might be a good idea to read a question and have the answer in your head. That is what I was taught when I prepared for the bar. So read a question, come up with an answer and then see if the answer is in the four options that you get. That might help you narrow it down. Or, you know, get rid of options that don't work, something like that. But try to run a scenario that works for you when you get flustered. Yeah, that's really, really, really important. And the next point is helpful to a certain extent, write down translations. You don't have much time, so that's why I said to a certain extent. And that's also kind of going along the lines of know your strengths, know your game plan. Are you quick? Do you know that you always have extra time? Then that might be something worth doing. Or do you know you barely ever finish in time? Then don't do it. But there is, there is definitely sometimes an advantage in writing down translations because again, you make sure that you don't overlook a certain word, yeah? So writing down translations might be helpful, but this is something you really want to use carefully and you definitely want to practise in test runs, yeah? So see how much time you have, if it works out. If you don't have enough time, don't translate. Try to, well, use your gut feeling or whatever you use, yeah? The next one is mutzer Lücke, which hopefully you understand. Don't get stuck, yeah? Move on when necessary, specifically in the multiple choice question part. Don't get stuck on one question, pick an answer and then move on. You don't have much time, so you want to be time-conscious, yeah? And for the free writing part, pro-con comparison. So again, if you get stuck and you don't really know what to do, pro-con is always a good way to argue a point, yeah? It's not the most creative, but it does the trick. So that's always something to kind of like have in the back of your pocket. And then obviously, very, very, very important, check your spelling. So capitalisation of nouns, you obviously know that already, but I can't over-stress how important that is. So your nouns have to be capitalised, always double-check, triple-check. And check if you use the correct article, the correct plural, yeah? Check your conjugation. And I didn't write it down, but also check your cases. These are basics quote-unquote, but this will lead to a severe reduction of points if you make mistakes in these fields. And that's also something that you can check, other than, you know, content or sentence structure. All of that is a little harder than to check for capitalisation, conjugation, article plural and such, yeah? So I know I'm not reinventing the wheel here, you probably already know that, but sometimes it's good to just have kind of like a list. And as I've said before, you really want to practise your strategy beforehand. Alright, and now we're getting to the next part, how to prepare. And I've mentioned it before, do practice tests, yeah? If you get your hands on AP exams, do them. And if you don't, but you could, right? You can just Google it. I know they're not supposed to be uploaded, but you know, there are some out there. So practise, 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 practise. If you don't get your hands on one, you can always try for the Goethe C1 exam or C1 practice material, but that's very comparable. Do at least one. I recommend to do more than one, but do at least one. And when I say do it, I mean under actual exam conditions. So time yourself, you know, like try to put yourself in a position where you are, no, don't try. Put yourself in a position where you can't get distracted. So you kind of simulate the stress just so you know what to expect, yeah? But I recommend doing it more than once. So that's the first point. And then the second point, and obviously that applies to learning a language no matter what, try to immerse yourself as much as possible, yeah? There are different ways to do that. You can change your cellphone settings. You can and you should read German newspapers. I wrote down a couple: Der Spiegel, Die Zeit, FAZ, SZ Welt, yeah, classic. This is also helpful because you will probably encounter a newspaper article, so you get used to that style and it helps you get updated on current events. And then also it helps you learn German and just practise. You could watch German shows on Netflix, on Amazon, YouTube. There is German TV that you can, I don't know, buy a card for or something like that. So try to watch as much German shows as possible. Depending on your German level, that is not as much fun and as relaxing as English shows, but it's the best way to learn German without putting in conscious effort, yeah? And then obviously listen to German music and/or podcasts. There is a variety out there. Pick a topic that you're actually interested in, that makes it easier, and just see what's out there. Yeah, but you really want to immerse yourself as much as possible. The next point is that you have to practise your vocabulary. I've said it before, specifically when it comes to nouns, you want to know your articles and your plurals. And when it comes to verbs, you want to know your conjugations. Regular, irregular, mixed verbs, all, all of that, yeah? So do as much as possible. I recommend paper flashcards because writing them also helps your brain remember words. If paper isn't your thing, then you could use apps, yeah? Anything is better than nothing. Paper is a little bit better than the rest, but as I've said, anything is better than nothing. But practise your vocabulary. It is boring, I know it is, but it's the foundation, yeah? Next point is do exercises. I wrote down a couple. Schubert, for example, has a lot of different levels. I recommend going to the more difficult exercises, B1, B2. But the basics are good too, anything you do helps. But keep, keep practise, keep practising, yeah? And then, as I said, the Goethe Institute has a couple of exams that are available on the internet. Do all of that, yeah? And then the last point is have some key phrases memorised for the free speech part. For example, meiner Meinung nach, einerseits, andererseits. Or ich finde das. Yeah, try to have a couple of just standard lines memorised that you can use and you don't have to think about. This is super, super helpful because you will be stressed, you will be flustered. And if you have these phrases to fall back on, you don't have to think about it and you kind of like have, have the sentence already down, yeah? So that is super, super, super important. You can Google phrases, they have phrases like this online. Diskussionsvokabel, if you will. Or you just pick, you know, you make your own list. But have some close by that you really memorise, like vocabulary. Alright, so my next point is the recommendation to make your own grammar flashcards. What I mean by that is to make flashcards that are basically your own grammar book, yeah? So grammar flashcards could, could have information like how to negate, yeah, when to use nicht, when to use kein. Or which preposition forces what case upon you. Or conjunctions. What's up with conjunctions? Subordinating, coordinating, when to use which and what are they, stuff like that. You can also go to my homepage that you see on the first page. I have a couple of examples of grammar flashcards. They're somewhat random, it's stuff that my students asked about. It does help to put stuff like that in your own words. It helps you remember it better. So that's why I do recommend doing that. Obviously, that's not something you want to do the day before. Yeah, but generally on your German journey, I do recommend getting this started at some point. The next point is a very unpopular one. I know myself, I didn't like it when I heard about it, but I can tell you from my own experience, two bar exams, it definitely helps. And that is to avoid loud noises and fast-changing lights on study days. So there is a lot of evidence, scientific research that shows that your brain does not hold on to stuff that you memorised if you torture it, if you will, with loud noises and fast-changing lights. Which means if you have spent an eight-hour day of memorising vocabulary or, I don't know, you conjugated all the verbs and then in the evening you watch an action movie, the entire day is basically for the trash, yeah? So you can follow this or you don't. Science is on my side. And I just wanted to let you know, you do with it what you want. And then the last one is definitely an unpopular opinion, in America at least, and that is take a break. So the day before, take a break. It is very unlikely that you will understand something about German the day before that you haven't understood the month or years before. It's very unlikely that you will remember 10 pages of vocabulary if you haven't remembered them the weeks before, yeah? You have studied hard, hopefully, you should. So you have studied hard and you have put in your work. Now take a, take a rest. Your brain wants to take a break, yeah? So at least the day before, take a break, do something nice. Don't watch action movies, do something relaxing. And then go into the exam with a fresh and relaxed brain. That is my recommendation. I've also made a list with the grammar that you need to know to pass the exam. So the AP German exam is at a C1 level, which is native speaker almost. So you definitely need to know all, all the things. But I've written down kind of what all the things mean. So you definitely need to know your cases. I am sure you have learnt your four cases. You know your nominativ, your accusativ, your dativ, your genitiv. If not, that's not good, yeah? So get a crash course on the four cases. This is definitely the foundation of German. You also want to know your conjugation, regular, irregular, mixed, separable, inseparable, modalverben, all of that, yeah? You need to know your conjugation. You also need your tenses, definitely present tense, definitely simple past, definitely perfect, possibly future tense. I didn't write down the past perfect because that's probably the one you can ignore. But present, simple past and perfect, you definitely need to know. You definitely need to know your negation and sentence structure. I've written it down, so independent clause, subordinate clause, relative clause, infinitive sentence with zu. These are the things that you definitely need to be fluent, quote-unquoting, yeah? And I've written that down just in case you want to refresh stuff. So Schubert, as I've said, has lots of exercises and you can also Google stuff. So if you struggle with one of these topics, definitely get a refresher on that or if you have a tutor, ask them to go over that. Yeah, these are kind of like the basic structures. Obviously, there is a little bit more, but this is the minimum requirement for sure. Alright, and now we're gonna get to the practice part. I have taken a example question and we're gonna do that together now. I'm gonna switch to German because that is a language we're all getting tested in. So interaction's gonna be difficult, so I'm gonna read it. You can practise your pronunciation along if you want to do that. And then we're gonna go through the questions together, alright? Thema Naturwissenschaft und Technologieübersicht. In diesem Text geht es darum, wie man verlorene Objekte wiederbekommen kann. Die Ursprüngliche Werbung wurde 2013 in Deutschland auf der Webseite bringmeback.com veröffentlicht. Also, wir haben eine Werbung und die werden wir uns jetzt gleich angucken und dann gibt es Fragen zu dieser Werbung. Lost and found, Bring me back. Bring me back, verlieren war gestern. Etwas verloren, keine Panik. Bring me back garantiert eine bequeme und schnelle Rückführung von verlorenen Gegenständen. Mit Bring Me Back können Gegenstände individuell markiert und bei einem möglichen Verlust dem rechtmäßigen Besitzer zugeordnet und zurückgeführt werden, ohne dass du persönliche Kontaktdaten preisgeben musst. Erstens, einen Gegenstand kennzeichnen. Alle deine Wertsachen, die du unterwegs mit dir führst, kannst du verlieren. Kennzeichne deine Gegenstände mit Bring Me Back Markern. Dafür stehen dir verschiedene Marker wie Aufkleber, Taschenanhänger, Schlüsselanhänger etc. in mehreren Designs zur Verfügung. Zweitens, individuelle Marker aktivieren. Jeder Marker erhält eine individuelle Codenummer, mit der eine Zuordnung zu dir möglich ist. Trage die Codenummer auf www.bringmeback.com ein und gib einen Finderlohn an, den du im Verlustfall an den ehrlichen Finder zahlen möchtest. Durch den Finderlohn erhöhst du, erhöhst du den Anreiz zur Rückgabe signifikant und die Rückführungsquote steigt auf über 90%. Zusätzlich schreckt die Registrierung deiner Gegenstände diebe ab. Drittens, verlieren ohne in Panik zu geraten. Hast du etwas verloren, wird dein verlorener Gegenstand mit 90-prozentiger Wahrscheinlichkeit innerhalb von 24 Stunden gefunden. Der Bring Me Back Marker ermuntert den Finder die Codenummer deines Gegenstandes auf www.bringmeback.com einzugeben. Prinzipiell erfolgt die Rückgabe absolut anonym. Was kostet mich Bring Me Back? Du bezahlst nur die Marker zum Kennzeichnen deiner Gegenstände und fertig. Der Schutz über bringmeback.com ist im Preis der Marker enthalten. Melde dich jetzt kostenlos bei Bring Me Back an. Alright, das ist also die Werbeanzeige. Die musst du dir in der, in dem Examen durchlesen und verstehen. Und dann gibt es dazu multiple choice Fragen. Jetzt ist also die Frage, möchtest du dir erst die Anzeige durchlesen oder erst die Fragen? Das ist etwas, was du im Idealfall vorher testest. Also was ist da deine beste Herangehensweise? Ich würde mir zuerst die Anzeige durchlesen, aber das bin ich. Du machst was für dich besser ist, ja? Okay. Okay, and jetzt kommen die Fragen. Wir haben, ich glaube, fünf, ja, fünf Fragen und jeweils vier Antwortmöglichkeiten, ja? Jetzt würde ich also vorschlagen, lies dir die Frage durch und versuche dir die Antwort selber zu geben, ohne die Antwortmöglichkeiten zu lesen. Let me say that in English as well for everybody. So my recommendation is read the question first, think about the answer and then try to see if it's in the answer possibilities. That is my recommendation you do you, but that's what I would do. Okay, zurück zu Deutsch. Also wir lesen die Frage und dann gebe ich euch kurze Sekunde oder ein paar Sekunden und dann gebe ich euch die Antwort. Wer ist wohl die primäre Zielgruppe dieser Werbung? Menschen, die sich oft in der Stadt verlaufen. People that often get lost in the city. Bürger, die ein verlorenen Gegenstand gefunden haben. Citizens that have found a lost item. Menschen, die auf wertvolle Gegenstände Beizicht tragen. People that often carry valuable things with them. Oder Hauseigentümer, die Angst vor Kriminellen haben. Homeowners that are afraid of criminals. Und die Antwort ist C. Weil es natürlich nicht um Einbruch geht. Also D kann nicht stimmen, weil es geht nicht darum, ob jemand in der Wohnung, in die Wohnung oder in das Haus einbricht. B stimmt nicht, weil es nicht darum geht, um die Leute, die etwas finden, sondern es geht um die Leute, die etwas verlieren. Und A ist falsch, weil es geht nicht darum, dass man sich verläuft, sondern dass man Dinge verliert, ja? Nummer zwei, in welchem Ton ist die Werbung geschrieben? In einem formellen Geschäftston? In a formal business tone? Direkt und umgangssprachlich? Direct and groovy? In einem humorvollen Ton? Funny? Dringlich und emotional? With importance and emotional? Which I feel is oxymoron, but who am I to judge? Und die Antwort ist B. Weil wir ja in der Anzeige du gelesen haben, nicht wahr? Du isst, also naja, umgangssprachlich nicht unbedingt, aber es ist auf jeden Fall nicht formell. Dringlich und emotional, wie gesagt, D, das ist ein Widerspruch in sich. C, in einem humorvollen Ton? Lustig ist es nicht. Da habe ich aber keine bessere Erklärung als es ist nicht lustig. Deswegen bleibt dann nur B. Und die letzte Frage auf dieser Seite, welche Funktion hat der Finderlohn? Which function has the finder's fee? Er hilft Findern, Kontakt mit dem Besitzer eines verlorenen Gegenstands aufzunehmen. He, it helps finders to contact the owners of the lost item. Er informiert Bring Me Back darüber, welchen Verkaufswert ein verlorener Gegenstand hat. It informs Bring Me Back about the value of a lost item. Er bezahlt Bring Me Back dafür, dass er hilft, ein verlorenen Gegenstand zu finden. He pays Bring Me Back for helping to find a lost item. Oder er ist ein kleines Dankeschön für den Finder, wenn er ein verlorenen Gegenstand zurückgibt. It's a small thank you for the finder if he gives back a lost item. Und die Antwort ist D. Ein Dankeschön für den Finder. Because that's what it is, right? It says, it says something like it's a small finder's fee to, yeah, for, yeah, it's a thank you. It actually uses kind of that language. It is not helping Bring Me Back because Bring Me Back says they are not associated with it. And B can't be right because we're not telling the value of the item. Jetzt spreche ich Englisch, ich rede wieder Deutsch. Und A kann nicht passen, weil es eben nicht um den Kontakt geht, ja? Sondern es geht darum, dem ehrlichen Finder ein Dankeschön zu sagen. Das war die Formulierung und deswegen trifft D zu. Nummer vier, was ist eine Voraussetzung dafür, dass Bring Me Back funktioniert? Der Finder muss Zugang zum Internet haben. The finder has to be able to use the Internet. Der Verlierer muss eine monatliche Gebühr zahlen. The loser of the item has to pay a monthly fee. Der Finder muss den verlorenen Gegenstand bei der Polizei melden. The finder must give the police a notification of the lost item. Oder der Verlierer muss eine genaue Beschreibung des Gegenstands liefern. The loser again of the item must give a description, very detailed description of the item. Und hier ist die Antwort A. Why, oder warum stimmen die anderen nicht? D, der Verlierer muss keine genaue Beschreibung des Gegenstandes liefern. Dafür gibt es ja die Nummer. Von der Polizei wird auch nicht geredet. Deswegen ist C falsch. Und eine monatliche Gebühr muss auch nicht bezahlt werden, weil der ganze Service ja kostenlos ist. Das steht da zweimal in dem Text, ja? Deswegen A. Ja, und da muss man sich, also man muss das... Und da muss man sich, also man muss das online registrieren, steht ja fünfmal, also das ist übertrieben. Die E-Mail-Adresse, deswegen eben Internet ist wichtig. Ja, und die letzte Frage ist, Sie wollen sich bei Bring Me Back anmelden, aber haben noch Fragen zum Service. Welche der folgenden E-Mail-Anfragen wäre am passendsten? So, you wanna register with Bring Me Back, but you still got questions and which email would be the most appropriate? So, here you have to judge yourself, what is appropriate. Don't find the answer in text. Ich möchte nur sicher gehen, dass ich richtig verstanden habe. Ich muss bei Bring Me Back einfach nur für die Marker bezahlen, es gibt also keine weitere Gebühr. I wanna just make sure that I understood correctly. I have, I only have to pay for the mail, the little the little stickers and such. There is no further fee, question mark. B, ihr ganzes Geschreiben bringt mich total durcheinander, was soll ich jetzt bitteschön bezahlen? Ich kapiere überhaupt nichts mehr. Your entire writing confuses me completely. What? What the hell? Do I need to pay? I don't understand anything. Oder C, ich habe totale Panik, weil ich mein Laptop verloren habe. Hast du den vielleicht gefunden und das kostet es, damit ich ihn wieder zurückkriege? I'm completely panicking, because I lost my laptop. Did you find them maybe and how much does it cost to get it back? Können Sie mir bitte sagen, ob Sie vielleicht mein Portemonnaie gefunden habe? Ich habe schon überall nachgefragt, aber niemand hat es gesehen. Could you please tell me if you maybe found my wallet? I asked everywhere already, but nobody has seen it. And here the answer is A. Let's talk about the eh Deutsch. Ähm, lasst uns über die anderen Antworten sprechen. Also, B ist sehr, sehr unfreundlich, nicht wahr? Ähm, ihr habt das an meiner Übersetzung gesehen, der Heck oder der Herr. Das steht da natürlich nicht, da steht bitteschön, nichtsdestotrotz ist der Ton hier sehr, sehr unhöflich. Und das Bitte heißt eben nicht bitte, sondern eher der Herr, ja? C und D, da geht es um Gegenstände, die verloren wurden. Und in der Anzeige steht ja, dass Bring Me Back nichts mit denen, mit der Abwicklung der Gegenstände zu tun hat. Deshalb sind C und D keine guten Antwortmöglichkeiten. A ist gut, weil da jemand nachfragt, ob er richtig verstanden hat, dass dieser Service kostenlos ist und man nur für diese Sticker oder so bezahlen muss. Und genau das steht eben auch in der Anzeige, deshalb ist das die beste Antwortmöglichkeit. Also, ihr seht, manchmal hat man die richtige Antwort direkt da. Manchmal muss man halt die schlechten Antworten sozusagen aussieben. Welche Methode jetzt gut für euch ist, das müsst ihr selber herausfinden. Ja, da hilft eben Übung. Ich finde, es ist gut, sich die Antwort gleich schon mal zu überlegen und zu gucken, ob es die richtige Antwort gibt. Und ansonsten verwende ich meistens Auswahlverfahren. But you, you do you, yeah, whatever works for you, I don't know, but that's what practice comes in. Das ist also eine Übung aus einem AP-Examen. Also, multiple choice, tie. Okay. And that is it, that is all I have prepared for today. So, if there are no more questions, we can wrap up for today. If you wanna reach out to me, you can do that via Weizent. I think there might be a link somewhere to my profile. And but obviously, there are also many, many other great German tutors on Weizent that I'm sure can help you with all your German questions. And I also have a homepage that you can see up there. As I've said, I have some German flashcards on there, German grammar flashcards. And and some other material about cases and stuff. I also have a German blog that might be interesting for you to check out for the culture part. I'm writing about Germany, the German culture, all things German, the German language. The link is on the first page as well. So, yeah, you can check that out as well. Also, if you are studying for other AP exams, which you might do, then please check out the other, I wrote it down, thirty plus, that's a lot, free AP study sessions from Weizent that are happening now and over the next couple of weeks. They should also be recorded and uploaded somewhere. So, I think you can watch them even if you didn't attend them live, which is great. And um, yeah, that's, that's it for me. Thank you for joining me. I wish you good luck for your exams, all the, all the very best. Viel Glück und Erfolg und danke. Tschüss.